All right.
All right. So it's six thirty-one, time to call the Conservation Commission for the city of Torrington to order Tuesday, April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, in City Hall Room two fifteen on one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Present is Dan McGinnis, Jeremy Spitz, myself, Christine Altman, staff member, Assistant City Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus. We have a guest speaker, Emma Dutil, the Yukon Intern, and also Renata Bertotti, both on teams. The first order of business is the minutes for approval. We have two, A, the January twenty-eighth regular meeting.
Yeah, if you want to look at this.
It's all about my fault. I'll make the motion approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
January twenty.
Yeah. Are you here for the January twenty?
I'm looking to see. I'm not sure.
That's true.
Maybe not.
Twenty-eighth I was.
Was that it?
So there's, yeah, March twenty-fifth and the January twenty-eighth. So you're not here on twenty?
I was here on, for the March meeting. I'm not sure about January. I thought it was here for the twenty.
Should be in the beginning. Who's present?
Up here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was here.
All right. We have your second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And then we have March twenty-fifth regular meeting.
Motion approved.
All in favor? Motion carries. Okay. So next order of business is our Natural Resources Inventory Presentation. Can we go around the room and introduce ourselves to each other? So I am, I'll start, I'm Christine Altman. Me right here. I'm the chairperson of the City Conservation Commission.
I am Jeremy Spitz.
Dan McGinnis.
And you know me, Nate Nardi Cyrus, Staff Assistant City Planner.
How long have you all been on the Conservation Commission in Torrington?
About ten years, I think.
I have been on about, a little under twenty years.
I'm a new guy, probably around one year.
Oh, that's perfect. So there is like a big range. So just so you know, there is another educator on teams as well, Owen Placido. So Owen and I, I am Renata Bertotti, and Owen and I are both Assistant Extension Educators. I work with CLEAR and have this combined appointment where I teach Land Use Academy and teach this Climate Core class. And Owen, you know, I'll let him introduce himself, but he's split appointment between CLEAR and C-Grant. And through Climate Core, we have this academic portion of a class, and then the students learn the municipal planning, and they learn about impact of climate change, and especially we focus on climate adaptation. And then we link them up with a community partner such as yourself and put them in community to work on an actual project such as this. So that's what this program is about. We have this every year, so we always encourage our community partners to keep thinking about climate adaptation projects that you're working on for next years and next steps. Just so you know, there are students that are always in needs of these kind of things, and it's excellent experience for them, and we hope that this is a good help for the communities as well. On the Land Use Academy part, we teach, we provide bunch of services, from mapping and GIS services to the services that are geared to the land use commissions. And Torrington is like really impressive, like from planning, from brownfields work, from your, you know, just like a need for flood protection. I mean, you have like a lot of stuff. So especially for newer commissioner, commissioners, I highly encourage you to check out our website where we always have a lot of commissioners training that is either free of charge, we do it online, we do it in person, we do it every which kind of way. New commissioners, when they come on board, need to sometimes get trained in how to read maps, in these skill kind of things. What is their job as commissioners? If they're on a ZBA, if they're on the Conservation Commission, it's a different charge. So all those kinds of things are helpful. Sometimes you can do it in half an hour webinar. Sometimes it's a longer thing, depending on which commissioner and what kind of training you got. But there is a lot of stuff that is either free or you can get it if you pay, you know, breakfast. Because, you know, if we provide food, we have to charge for food. So that, that's kind of a deal with that. But yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm happy that we kind of merged. I'm like really excited that Nate, that we worked with Nate on this.
Yeah, Renata, and also for these folks, if they're interested in the land use and the in-person tour sort of trainings, being that it's Conservation Commission because of the demand for that, is it worth them applying? Like, are you usually just preferencing P&amp;Z and ZBA, and there's not a lot of opening for advisory commissions?
You know what? There is portion, there are, land use training is relevant to Conservation Commissions as well, because they have a role in planning for the land use matters. So we talk about that in the training as well. Also, it's relevant to, for them to understand what the other commissions are doing because of their role in planning for land uses. That's one thing. But if you get your committees to have a training together, I can come to Torrington and do an in-person training for your boards. Like, if you can get your ZBA or planning, planning and zoning, your Conservation Commission, all of that ones, all to get together, I'll love to come in and do like one big in-person training for everybody together. That's, that's doable as well.
Okay, that's, yeah, I can definitely work with you to set something like that. I think we talked about that, because our ZBA is woefully undertrained per statute. Like, our P&amp;Z has all their training requirements, they're all hitting there, but our ZBA is really deficient, so.
It's not even so much about the statutes, it's more about like interest, you know, and for new commissioners, yeah. So anyways, you know, there, there are ways to do it for everybody. So if you have, as a Conservation Commissioners, if you have specific interest, there is stuff for you to, don't, yeah, it's not just for the people that must get it, because it's mandated by the state. Normally, when somebody is on a Conservation Commission for twenty years, that tells me they have an interest in this. And, and Owen, I don't know if you want to like say something about yourself?
Thanks, Renata. I'll just introduce myself quickly. Hi, everyone, my camera is not working, so I don't know if it's showing you my square enough, but my name is Owen Placido. I'm another Assistant Extension Educator at Yukon. As Renata said, I work with her and the folks at CLEAR, but also I'm part of Connecticut C-Grant, and I work on nature-based climate adaptation.
Okay.
And we took entirely too much of your and Emma's time already, so we'll stop.
So, yeah, Emma, it is your turn.
Awesome. Hi, everyone, good evening. My name is Emma Dutil. I'm a junior at the University of Connecticut, and I study political science and environmental studies, and I'm super excited to show you my project for the semester, the Natural Resources Inventory for Torrington. So I'm just gonna pull that up. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So I just kind of wanted to start off by talking about what a story map is. So a story map is an interactive tool that combines geospatial data, interactive media and text to communicate information. So I kind of think about it as like a fun article, because you can embed videos, you can embed maps, pictures, all to like help kind of explain your text. And then I would like to start by showing you the land cover map for Torrington. So this shows how land cover has changed in Torrington over time. So if you play the map down at the bottom, can be tricky to see a little bit, but the, the red shows where development has increased over time.
Yeah, you can see the east end is kind of blowing up. I just saw some people going.
Think it runs through two thousand and twenty-one. So that's the first map. And then the second section of the Natural Resources Inventory goes into soils and geology for Torrington. I used this feature called a sidecar in story maps, which allows you to kind of highlight particular layers from the map. So the first layer shows all the information for the section, and then it goes into each layer as you scroll. So this first layer, if it'll load, shows the soil information for Torrington, and then if.
Do you want to zoom in a little bit more on it? Do you mind zooming in just a couple clicks? So this is all like, you know, interactive as you're doing it, so you can be exploring stuff in the map while you're reading.
You can also, if you want to make the map bigger, there is an option to do that in the top right-hand corner. So that's the first layer. This layer shows the bedrock geology for Torrington. And something cool that I, I wanted to highlight on the map are, if you can see these little blue dots, those actually indicate mines in Torrington. The ones with the gold point on top of them are active mines, and those mines are mining for granite in Torrington, and the inactive mines are typically for soapstone or nickel and copper.
By mines, you mean gravel pits?
Yeah, the bedrock is granite.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. You can click on those fe, you can click on those features and it gives you more information. But it doesn't, it doesn't break it down to gravel, because I was, I was hoping too that it would say, it just says what like the parent material that they're mining is, and the granite.
So I'm trying to click on it, and it's not popping up, but you can. Oh, did it pop up on?
The whole ones.
Huh. Okay. Then this next section shows surficial geology. Okay. So then moving into water resources for Torrington. Nice picture of the lake.
Is that Berpond?
No, it's Stillwater.
Oh.
That's Berpond.
Yeah, so this probably take a second to load. Okay. So this first map again is all the information about water resources, and then as you flip through the slideshow, it separates the layers. Go to the next slide.
And this is mostly as slow as it is because the streaming over the,
Yeah.
If you tool around with it, it goes much faster.
Are you able to take the Torrington and like move it to the right, so it's not being covered by the?
Sure, yes. Is that easy to see?
That's better.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So this map is the Aquatic Connectivity Assessment, done by North Atlantic Aquatic Connectivity Collaborative. And then if you click on the left-hand corner, it pulls up a layer list or a legend. It'll actually tell you what's mapped. The red dots indicate a significant barrier for fish populations, and the, they're not popping up on my end, here they come. Okay. The fish symbols indicate where there was a fish survey done in each of the spots, and if you click on the fish, it'll tell you what, what was surveyed in the location. So if you scroll through, it looks like there is a lot of sunfish here. A brown bullhead, chain pickerel, and you can do that for each of the sites.
And those ones that are kind of, have circles around them, like halos, those are for American eel and wild brook trout, which are state species of special concern. So kind of gives you an idea of where aquatic connectivity might be important for, like for me, for a grant application or for in the wetlands, for looking at, you know, potential modifications of crossings, stream crossings to allow connection between populations.
Yes, and then this next map shows wetland information. And so the dark green, the, the green sections indicate wetland soils, mapped by a soil scientist, and then the blue sections are the wetlands. So then this next section shows watercourses, and the pink line separates the watersheds for Torrington. So on the right is Farmington Stillwater watershed, and then to your left is the Houssatonic River and Nagatuck River watershed. And then I wanted to talk about the importance of stormwater infrastructure. This is a picture from the nineteen fifty-five flood that hit Connecticut, and shortly after that, Connecticut kind of invested in a lot of dams, levees and culverts to try to prevent the damage from happening again. So this map shows levees, dams and culverts in Torrington. The two star dams are Hall Meadow Brook Dam and East Branch Dam, and then the little pushpins indicate the levees. And then the next map shows drinking water resources for Torrington. So the four points are the different water reservoirs, including Ruben Hart Reservoir, North Pond, West Pond and Allen Dam. And then if you open the layer list, there's also highlighted the surf, surficial aquifer potential, and then the aquifer protection zoning is also mapped on this map.
Can you explain that a little bit more? Can you explain about the aquifers? Let me just look at it a little bit. I missed this one I went through.
Yeah, we kind of just pitched it in at the last second, so.
Oh, really?
It needs a little bit of refining, yeah. And the zoning needs a little bit more refining, because that's, I have to pull out the, the feature where the, you know, that's the entire zoning map, and there's a, there's one district that's the water, watershed protection.
Okay. Can you pull up the aquifer information again?
Sure.
But it's just showing the whole zoning map there, you know?
Okay.
Basically, it's based on surficial geology.
Okay.
And I'm hoping to develop a lot of these narratives a little bit further. That's the best part about this tool, is that we can kind of continually modify it and take pieces we feel like we have more expertise on, but, you know, this basically covers city water through the reservoir system, but also, you know, could give some indication of aquifer potential for well districts.
So I guess, so we don't have any, I, I'm kind of confused. Are, are, like, things from red to, we have mostly yellow, yellow, orange. That's, that's what I'm seeing. So it's not even, like, the coarse grain deposits aren't even present in Torrington, or are they just missing from the?
They're like coarse grain deposits at fifty feet, but no deep coarse grain deposits.
Okay.
At like three hundred to four hundred feet. It's mostly shallow, coarse grain deposits. That's what I'm seeing, just looking at it now.
Okay, so it's a complete map?
What do you mean by that?
Well, maybe I don't understand it. What, what, the, these are like different depths of aquifers?
Yeah, it's using surficial geology to just basically say, you know, we know that there's deposits at this generally over the course of the entire state. So they're not, it's not local mapping, it's like, kind of like the wetlands map, the state wetlands, but that's my understanding of it anyway. I don't know, Renata, if you know anything about these maps, I don't know a ton about them, but.
So the aqua, do you have an aquifer protection zone on your zoning map?
This is more like, just kind of general knowledge for people who might tap into them with their home wells, not like, there's no, we don't have a zone, a regulated area.
All right, so if you don't have a designated aquifer protection zone, that probably means that this is just a surface, very surface kind of strata, like strata that keeps it. But I, I would be surprised if you have like any true actual aquifers, and, and they were not identified back in two thousands and two thousands, when the EPA and DEEP required this map.
So this means that we don't have deep aquifers?
Well, that's why with the surficial, not to get too far down this rabbit hole, but with, with the aquifer protection sort of management, municipal management, it does that, I mean, I just figured it wouldn't apply to us, because we have a surface water system that's serving the city, like, we don't have municipal wells. But you're saying that also, in addition to like us not having, I just thought it wouldn't have been mapped, because we don't have municipal, we don't need it, because we don't have municipal wells, but I don't know much about it, so.
It does not matter. I, so to best of my recollection, back in two thousands, the state required this mapping, and it, it really did not have to do so much with municipal wells as much as with general provision of water supply to population. So even regular wells would have mattered.
Okay.
So there are these regulated activities that if you had mapped aquifers, you would have to regulate these twenty-seven or twenty-nine specific activities, including like car washes, and there is industrial kind of activity stuff.
Okay.
And they included, they included some, I kind of want to say some like surface, surface supply to aquifers. So as long as you had like a true aquifer, any sort of supply shedding to it was or needed to be included in this mapping. So anyways, I would have to refresh my memory on it, but if you do not have an aquifer protection, designated aquifer protection area, then all that this means is you have some surface aquifer, so you may want to protect your home wells, but it's probably not, you know, how, how deep are your home wells? They gotta be deeper than fifty feet.
Right. Well, I'm sure most people are not pulling out of an aquifer, they're just pulling out of cracked fissures in the, in the rock and, you know, going real deep.
Okay. Thank you.
The next section talks about forests. This is the map for the section. The iTree assessed it with iTree and found that tree canopy covers about sixty-two percent of the area. And then I can pull up the map classifies forests as either deciduous, evergreen and mixed. So then the next section of the story map talks about agricultural habitats, and then this map showcases farm fields, areas of pasture and hay, and farm land soils identified by USDA. This next section of the story map talks about climate resilience. This first map models habitat resiliency by the Nature Conservancy, based on topographic complexity, geodiversity and landscape connectedness. I can zoom in on a bit, too.
And I almost think that this map is a good one to zoom out on, because you can get to see kind of where Torrington fits in the regional connectivity of forests, especially for like climate migration of species. Can you kick it out another level or two?
Sure.
So you can see this sort of band comes up from the Hudson Highlands up through Vermont, Massachusetts and into Vermont, and all the way to Canada, and Torrington nicks it at the very kind of corner there, so that those forests by Hall Meadow are like really high quality, all the watershed lands there, and the state park, and that whole, even through to Camp Mo, that whole corner is just really, is going to experience a lot of movement as animals move, kind of generally northward over the coming years.
And then this next map is actually pretty interesting. This shows the heat island effect for Tor, for Torrington, and you can kind of see the city part with the most development will kind of experience the most of the heat island effect, probably due to less natural surfaces and more impervious surfaces that absorb heat. And then for this one, I can also zoom out to show you the rest of Connecticut and how it compares.
And this kind of data at a parcel level is maybe not the best, just because of the scale it was modeled on, like, it's really, you see a lot of these little dots kind of throughout, and I don't know how much, you know, credit I would put into those. But I mean, in general, you can see, you know, the downtown area, east end, up through Winston Road, I'm sure those big mine surfaces are, you know, absorbing a lot of heat.
We have some big parking lots, industrial parks.
Right, that's true. Right, that whole, yeah, and I feel like that's what's showing up.
Yep.
Over here.
This map, this next map is flooding information for Torrington identified by FEMA.
These are the regulatory maps I still use. It's outrageous.
And then this last, uh, map under climate resiliency shows, uh, Torrington's vulnerability to wildfires identified by the US Forest Service. Um, Torrington, uh, is pretty low risk for wildfires, which is good. Um, if you zoom out though, it's pretty interesting to see how, um, other states compare.
We've been in that Waterbury area, like what's going on?
I was curious about that too. Looks like.
Yeah, not what I would expect.
Yeah.
In the, in the western section there.
And this is probably the appropriate scale to be looking at this kind of map anyway.
Yeah, it's that island in Waterbury.
I know, and the Hudson Valley, it was like hotter or whatever the.
Yeah, it's so strange, you wouldn't think so.
I.
Huh.
Yep.
And the, the beauty about this as well is that Emma did a good job of kind of documenting where we could, um, metadata and, um, uh, you know, references to these data. So you can like, this can be a starting point to like, look into what they did to, as like what kind of variables they modeled, um, to get at this kind of stuff, if you really want to get into it.
And then the next section of the natural resources inventory kind of goes into endangered uh, species and fish populations in the Torrington area. So, um, some endangered animal species pictured here are grassland birds, tree roosting bats, wood turtles, um, New England cotton tails, and the bridle shiner.
Well, there's a, there's a eastern cotton tail that's abundant.
Okay.
And the New England cotton tail, it's my understanding that the eastern cotton tail historically was on the east side of the Hudson River or the west side of the Hudson River. And the New England cotton tail was in New England. And then it came over and kind of displaced.
Oh, how can you tell the difference between them?
It's, they can really only do it through genetics. It's really, it's really, and they have different habitat requirements. But New England cotton tail is like a thicket species. So DEEP has poured tons of money because of the potential listing into like creating shrublands and young forests just to like keep the population from going over the edge into endangered, which would really screw with development through the endangered species act.
Um, and then this next section shows, uh, endangered plant species. And then this map, um, has again the fish surveys, um, listed on it on top of also areas of natural diversity mapped, um, for Torrington. And then this map shows topography and elevation information. Um, here's, uh, the highest point and, and then the lowest point. I can zoom in if it'll allow me to.
I'd love to see that Connecticut statistic where it's the greatest relief. Like, do you think we're contenders for, uh, 500 to, you know, almost 1,400 feet? That's pretty big.
And then the last map just shows, um, tax parcels and open space parcels, parcels for the town of Torrington. Um, and then if you would like to look at a, a version of the map with like all of the different layers from the whole NRI, I have, um, a button click.
And I have it pulled up too, Emma. So when you're done, I was going to walk through an example of it. It might be a little less.
Yeah, so if you click on that button from the story map, it'll take you to that final, um, NRI map.
That's pretty rich.
Yeah, very thorough.
And if you want, guys, I'll, uh, um, I'll just do this quick share. I'm not going to take a lot of time, but it's a good, uh, can y'all see that? So this is basically what, what, what you get. And then I zoomed into, this is the city-owned, um, town farm parcel that's up on University Drive, just because it's a really cool parcel. And so basically, you know, you start with the Torrington parcels layer up here and you can just work your way down this list. The little eye clicky is the visibility. So if you kind of open this up, um, it starts out closed, right? And then you open it up and all the layers come. If I turn the faces on, we have some of that superficial aquifer protect, uh, potential we were talking about kind of right along Stillwater, which makes a lot of sense. Nothing else in, in that, but you know, let's see notable dams. Got to turn the regular eye on. Okay, so yeah, oh, it's doing the whole thing. Um, but anyway, this gets you, so there's some, if you went down this hole, this is all water resources. So there's a lot going on here, but there's a wetland here, wetland here, a little water course on both sides of the property that we've, we know is there. We know that there's, you know, fish species here. I think that this ended up being American eel. So, you know, in my mind, I know that if there's, you know, that this, there could be American eel up in this property because they can kind of climb up anything to get up and it might end up living up, up here down the road. Um, anyway, so I'm just going to close this again. Farmland soils, see what we got. So there's some farmland here, some hay fields identified. 490 parcels, so that's the tat, that's the current use program where you can get tax, uh, tax relief. Um, and so they, you know, it kind of gives you the context for people who are seeking that relief because they have farm plans. Um, let's see. Oh, over here, uh, yeah, right here. Why doesn't he have 4, 490?
Who's that?
Earl, Earl Skoken? Anyway, um, let's see. So in an elevation, I mean that you can just throw some contours on this map. So all of a sudden now the picture is really coming into, into view here. Um, you got that, you got that. Let's see, climate resiliency. See if they, does anything interesting? Oh, oh, they like it. Um, heat severity, I don't know how much I would trust that at this scale or wild, wildlife, I mean wildfire risk, I may shut that off. Um, soils, I'm probably not going to pull that up. If I pull this up, I'll see that that's protected open space, um, underneath all these layers. So you can move these around if you wanted to like, you know, put it above it, you know? But so you can kind of make the map, uh, work for you. Exactly. Um, and yeah, and so now you kind of have an assessment right there. You could print this out, give you an idea of kind of the resources that you might be concerned about. Um, I've always, I, I know this has been an idea for a while, but there's the John Brown Trail up here, comes through the five points. I've always loved the idea of bringing it down through here and then to Stillwater, to that parking area there. And this gives you kind of an idea to also, um, I tried to bring this up because it's cool. Natural diversity, why isn't it showing up? We have a nat, natural diversity database layer.
I think some of the, um, the layers, if they're hidden by the other layer.
Probably under.
Makes sense. So you might have.
Right, or there's. They might be scale dependent too. Um, so these layers are set to show up at different scales too.
Yeah.
Because there is a, there is a blob here as well. This parcel is just really awesome. Um, anyway, so yeah, just wanted to show it. So like if we ever get something that comes in, even if it has an easement and we want to look at potential resources, we can kind of come up with or even direct the applicant to come up with something. Um, I've known municipalities that have mobilized NRIs like that where they actually make, you know, require in some cases the applicant to put together a report using these, these data. So anyway, that's, that's all I got, but I'm, I'm excited about this and happy to work with it. Um, and it's kind of, we can always, we can always update it. That's the best part is it's a. That's, that's that land cover, I think. Because the rest of this is not really applicable to that. That just lets you like.
So that's just, uh, yeah, I understand.
Which, you know, the land cover is kind of one of those layers that's good at a certain extent. Like obviously if you look at an aerial photo, which, is there a base map on this, Emma?
For a land cover?
Yeah. Or not for land, I'm sorry.
Satellite.
Yeah, like a satellite image.
Oh, I, like an imagery layer?
Yeah.
There is not, but I can certainly add one.
Well, they, no, they have one on here. They usually like, uh, Esri like has kind of a, I don't know if it'll even show up with all, all the data that's being showed right now. You probably can't even see it if it did come up. But, uh, it's a fun tool to play around and it's, it's nice having it broke out by, by feature so you can kind of learn about it a little bit. But it's also, it's also nice to have it just data if you want to look at it in that way. But thanks.
For public distribution now?
Yeah, so I mean.
Yeah, so, yeah, where do we find it?
Uh, well, that's, Emma, we have a link. She's been working off of our GIS software. There's our GIS online, so it's really just a link that we can embed in our website. You know, ideally we could promote it, modify it. Um, I'm hoping to maybe as a referral from our commission, try to get the city council to adopt it to resolution, just as like, I've seen communities do that in other, like in New York when I was working, just to like demonstrate their sort of like, it adds weight to the tool as something like this is where the depository of all natural resources information for the city is, so they can direct people there. So anyway, yeah, I, I have some plans. I, I've worked a lot on these in my old job, so.
Yeah, it was a super fun project, fun semester. Um, great working with Nate on this natural resource inventory.
Thank you so much for all your hard work and such a thorough job. Well done.
Thank you.
Meanwhile, I have added some information on these superficial aquifers. Just stuff from the deep in the chat if anybody wants to read any of that. So if you are interested.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, everyone, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, and hopefully we'll talk again in fall about, you know, something else or maybe more of this.
Okay.
Congrats, Nate. Great, great stuff. And thank you Nate, and thank you, uh, for hosting us tonight.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you, Owen.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Thanks, Emma.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so new business. Um, we have, um, donated trees, brainstorming session, adoption services, et cetera.
And if you wanted to table that for us.
Should we table like our, our old business till the next meeting? Or, or should we just go to the Jakes Donahue?
That's, I would table the table of the new business. The only, I think there was one, uh, yeah, table the first two items, but, um, the fit together grant.
About this one, yes.
So I wanted to bring this up. So Fit Together is like a partnership with, um, uh, Charlotte Hungerford. Um, and they, and, and Torrington and Winstead. And the Y, thank you. And, um, and the Y actually hosts it, right? It's like, it's a, it's a partnership, but there's all those groups. Parking Racks involved, uh, City where I'm involved. Um, and so it's really just looking to get, you know, to promote fitness and healthy living in Torrington through, um, education. They do stuff through the schools. They provide some small grants, um, and they do, like they're doing a bike rally, um, in May. Uh, so they do like a bunch of smattering of things like that. They have a grant, uh, that's opening up, um, for, uh, like, I guess it's, it, it's mostly educational, like holding educational programs and planning. But one of the items was through, um, uh, uh, community agriculture, like community gardens and that kind of stuff. So I just wanted to put it on your radar if anyone wants to brainstorm, maybe not for this year even, but for next year, especially with like the food forest type stuff. If we could get like, it even like maybe hire someone to do outreach on it to the community or something like that, we could probably put something together. There's no match and they're, I think they're $10,000 to $15,000.
Oh, well, there's a, a $5,000 grant program, some ConDOT active, whatever, uh, micro grants. And those, I would, Fit Together would do something like that because they can buy bike locks.
Right.
Helmets and that's.
It goes, I think that Fit Together is trying to focus more on, less on the, on the capital stuff and more on the education.
They can all, they can, they can hire people, um, to teach bike safety classes.
Right, exactly, yeah, that kind of stuff.
Last, you can get the grants for that.
Right, exactly. So that's just, I, I'll, what I'll do is when the RFP comes out, I'll circulate it.
Okay.
I am on the, like the steering committee for it, so I don't want to, I didn't want to like pull up the draft RFP and go over it in a public meeting, but, um, I'll let you all know about, you know, that opportunity.
Think about.
Right, just like.
Think about what, what we could use it for.
Right, it would be pretty low administrative. Like I could administer that grant and it would be pretty easy because it's not like reporting requirements and stuff will be a lot easier to do that. Um, municipalities are eligible, so I assume I could, you know, even though I'm on the, I just probably couldn't review the applications. So, um, anyway, just keep that in mind. I just wanted to bring your attention. I think they're going to be releasing it in like May. And that's why I just wanted to kind of like put it in your ear and then I'll, I'll circulate it when it comes in, so you'll kind of know what it is.
Okay, old business, Earth Day cleanup debris.
Are you, uh, in trouble?
No. Okay, that was a happy, that was a happy hit. I think, I think it went, I think it went really well. It was very stressful. There was a lot.
It was really stressful.
There was a lot of people there, um, early.
I was too stressed to even go get a drink after.
Dan, have you gone, have you gone to like some of the earlier cleanups?
Yeah, I, my knees are shot. I can't do any of that.
Oh, I, I understand.
It's the, it's the morning rush.
Yeah, but I just, you know, I mean, walking around.
Well, no, I understand. And I didn't even mean it like that. I more meant like that was the volume of people.
Yeah, I've seen in some of them that's good enough.
We, we had, yeah, we had over 80. I wouldn't be surprised if we had had 100 people in that beginning part. Um, I haven't sent out that press release yet, but it's kind of, I just circulated it to you guys. I was, I was waiting for pictures. Yeah.
Photos, so I brought my computer to do it. Can I, um, airdrop to your iPad?
I think so.
Okay, so I'm going to airdrop you tomorrow, maybe.
Yeah.
Airdrop you the photos.
Yeah, that'd be great. And then, um, yeah, we broke down, Christine and I kind of brainstormed a bunch of notes today after, so we didn't forget because there was a lot, there was a lot going on. Um, but overall, I think it was, it was, it was really good. We got, after seeing some photos of the dumpsters after, did, did you all see those photos? I'll circulate that to everyone.
You got some, somebody took them?
Yeah, um, what's her name again? Um, Tamara, Tamara.
Okay, yeah.
She, she, she gave, so I'll circulate them to everyone. But she took some inside and it was a lot more.
Okay.
It filled out, you know, further than what we saw. So I think it's safe to say it was more than last year for sure, the volume of stuff.
Okay.
Um, we did have a bunch of additions and I don't know. I mean, Jeremy was there, so we can, can chime in if you have other things. Um, but the notes for next year, so that we don't forget this, is, um, we want to like have, you know, so we understood that neither of you could come in the morning and that wasn't an issue. But we had some people come like right at nine and it was just too late. And so Christine and I kind of had a somewhat of a system, but it was so chaotic. Like you can't.
System.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You couldn't, we couldn't train new people coming in. So we're probably going to try to get people there at 8:30. At least two or three trained people at the table, just like signing people in.
Ivy today was saying, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta funnel people into a single file. That was one of her things too. It's just like, you get, like, like to have it open up, like that if it went from, you know, as you're facing out towards South Main Street or behind the table. That it, that the movement is from the left to right, so it's kind of open where the donuts and the coffee are. And then it funnels down to single file in front of the table.
Do they have any of those on?
I'm sure that somebody must. I bet somebody does.
Yeah, or or if we had more people, a crowd manager.
Yeah.
Just have someone out there being like, you know.
Yeah, single file.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, it's kind of, they were, yeah, they were doing, and we didn't have things set up in a way. So like people were kind of trying to do that a little bit, and we had multiple sign-ins. We had a sign-in for the event, but we also had kids. A lot of kids this year who wanted credit, and so they were like getting confused and thinking that they had signed in and. We have a whole, we'll have this set up.
Things that we went through, and what else?
Uh, plates utensils, napkins. We had forgotten that. Jeremy hopped on that. Do you want, um, we could, we could try to get you a gift card. Okay, um, we get, we know how to get gift cards, so, you know, just go, keep on rolling on the gift cards. Um, that, a bottled water or soda, just having some kind of drink available. Because the, because the water fountain was like full of water.
Oh, my God, it was disgusting.
It was pretty.
Sending people into the kitchen, but, but, uh, yeah. The other, I mean, I think that you're right, though, like, we've had years, like, this was a hot year. We've had years where nobody takes the water, and then the water, you have these cases of water kicking around in a car, in the trunk of a car for who. Who knows how long, so I'm sure like, you know, the microplastic.
Oh, and they were the cheapest water ever, though. I mean, I got one in twenty twenty-two from one of our gift cards, like to Home Depot. And it came back in and then it went back out again the next year. No one took water, came back in. By the third year, it ended up in the back of the car and then it was, you know, toast.
Yeah, so we, we, I'm kind of wondering whether we have a system, this was something that I thought of after, whether we have. Um, like a gift card, gift card set aside for. Um, that kind of thing, like sodas or teas or whatever, some kind of cold drink, bottled water, and that we. Get it based on what our crowd is.
Yeah, like a drive out at nine thirty, ten, pick it up.
Right, exactly, because we have that space of time between, so it'd be a perfect thing to just that way. We kind of, you know, know we're not getting much more. We, I think we get maybe a quarter to a third of our people back.
Yeah, it was, it was.
And that's very true.
I think that seems, it's pretty high. It was a nice day, too. It was good. It was a good day for the event. That was helpful. Um, community service with bags.
Oh, yes, I know what it means, that the community service sign is when you get your bags and gloves. Located, located with the bags and gloves.
Community service.
Sign in.
Oh, I see.
Having your group, we know what location you're going to, so you get your location. Oh, that, you know what? That is a, it should be location first, then they sign in, so they know what their location is.
So we could, I could. Give a.
Location, and then sign in, then they get their trash pickers, their bags and gloves, and if they need community service, they can.
Okay.
Sign up, sign up for that.
Great, um, you handed out trash pickers, like the arms thing?
Yeah.
If only a quarter of people come back, how do you get, get those back?
But normally we have been getting them back, but this year, we, how many did we lose?
Probably like three or four. So what we did, we, we were afraid of that because we just got these last year, I want to say. We had, yeah, well, we only had like two.
Right. Like for people who couldn't bend over.
Right, it'd be great. I, everyone could use them. It's not like, you know, or at least says me. Uh, right, exactly. So we're gonna try to get more, but we had on the sign-in sheet that said like trash grabber, yes or no. And last year it worked really well and I was just like, okay, but I was kind of, there wasn't a ton of people, so it was like, do you need a trash grabber? Okay, I'm gonna check that out for you. And so we had it all set up and the same thing happened. Some people took them home. I reached out by email.
And they brought them back.
And they brought them back and it all worked out wonderfully. We got everything back, but this time.
People said trash grabber and they're like, yeah, I'm a trash grabber. I'm gonna grab trash. So they're putting yes, all the way, I was like, I was like. Do we have thirty trash grabbers? We have thirty? And Nate's like, what are you talking about? Anybody who had an email who said that they were a trash grabber, got, got an email asking for them to pass, you know, bring them back. So we'll see what happens, but.
At least next time I can, well, that, but that'll just come in like man, crowd management. If we, if the people were signing in, can like walk people through the registration better.
Exactly.
We won't have to be.
It was, it was rough. It was rough. It was like, you know, all of us were working on handing out, you know, the assignments and. You know, and people were kind of self-signing themselves in. So there wasn't really any direction, and the first thing they saw was whether they needed community service hours. I think it actually is accurate, though. Like, I don't think people were signing in accidentally into community service hours. They just didn't think they needed to do it again.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Because, you know, who wants to write there all that information twice?
A lot of writing.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, okay. Um, I felt like I had another, oh, and we, we almost got a drone shot of it. And the picture is like, it was taken but didn't capture or whatever, like it was. So that was a bit disappointing. I saw the drone go up and it was like, you know, the chaos of it. But.
We'll try it next time.
Yeah.
We'll try it again. We'll figure it out.
Um.
So I think I was saying that, that we should have somebody who, um, maybe a volunteer or somebody on the commission. Who, they're just, their only job is to get photos of the sign-in and get photos of the lunch, luncheon.
Um, and we can do, we can do that delegation at the meeting before, um, we'll make stickers for each other. That's exactly, um, more walkable sites, tons of kids came and their parents just dropped them off. And we did not have enough walkable sites. It was like, where do we send these people? I was like, just go over there, like. Walk them south Main Street.
That worked out really well, because the kids just like dove into the river and pulled out all the stuff. It was fantastic.
Got a gift card.
Yep.
And almost threw away the packing. I was like, what is wrong with the children these days?
This generation, man.
He's like, a hundred dollars, whatever. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. Yeah, I was like, oh, man. Um, we were hard. I picked someone, I picked someone's lighting complaint to get that hundred dollars. Let's see, uh, so yeah, we, we're gonna try to come up with more walkable sites or just have like, if a site, just have multiples. Of the same walkable sites, because, I mean, honestly, every site could be picked up more. No one is doing a perfect job. There's cigarette butts. You want to have someone just picking up cigarette butts on South Main Street, like. I was walking around, just picking up tra, just picking up cigarette butts in Co Park and I was nowhere near done. And I was like, I, I didn't see it at first.
Right.
Train birds to like pick them up and deposit them somewhere.
Like, is that, I, when I was in, in college and I'd be going through Harvard Square at like seven thirty, eight AM. There were all, there was this family that picked up, that was their thing, was picking up cigarette butts, Harvard Square. And they, I, I'm assuming they must have been paid, but they were clearly a family, uh, from like the granny down to little kids. And they were using, um, like metal tongs, you know, like what you'd use to, for your barbecue.
Wow.
So now I'm thinking about that. I'm like, okay.
Or just trash grabber, trash grabber, great, great. I would have, I was. It was fun. I was actually having, I was enjoying myself, because I never cleaned, so. Um, but anyway, so we'll, we'll figure that out. Um, assessment of garbage by commission, we'll just try to make a more concerted effort to, to do that next year or later on.
Yeah, so I mean, I've done it for the last couple of years. That's my daughter. We drive around, we check off all the stuff, you know, we kind of do an assessment from the road. But I was getting some calls, so it's getting calls that made me feel really, like, um, sending one person out to like the. Corner of Dibble and, um, and East Main, and I get a call back saying there's briers everywhere. I'm just one person and there's so much trash. And I did what I could. I was like, thank you. But, you know, I probably could have sent, probably could have sent a bunch of other people out there.
And we had, we had a needle stick.
Oh, to call an ambulance.
Or somebody actually got stuck.
On Franklin, was it Franklin Drive or Franklin Street?
She said, you know, so it was, um, the, the ambulance gave her a little baggie to put it in. And, um, and she declined the ambulance ride because she was like, I'm okay. I can drive to the hospital, but I think it was good because they encouraged her to go. And what came out of that was that, um, the, the doctor told her, well, AIDS. Cannot live outside the butt, so you, you're not even at risk for that at all. Has to be like a fluid transfer. But you're at risk for hepatitis, which can live for two weeks. Something, and they can't test this, um, needle because it was like a type that would be used for a blood test on a diabetic. She, she picked it up, like if it looked like a needle, she wouldn't have touched it, but it looked like the cap to a spray can. Like the, not the cap, but the little nozzle. And so.
So it was a, it was for, it was for diabetic testing, but it's still, you could still get, uh.
So they did, they gave her an antibiotic, they did a full workup on her, and then she has to wait. To, you know, to have it done again in six months to find out whether she's okay. But the doctor told her that the chances were, were super diverse. Low.
Just it being a diabetic one rather than a drug user, that makes it lower.
You'd think, yeah, it won't be less.
Right, but.
Possible still.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, that was. So that made me think, you know, number one, it made me think, okay, what's our liability? So we need to talk to. To, you know, like magistrate and ask about that. Um, and of course, she's like, she was out with a, with a child. She was, she was with her middle schooler. Picking stuff up, and she said that she was just telling her, the, the kids, like, if it, you know, if it looks sharp, or if it looks like a needle. If it looks like there's some weird fluid and it, don't pick it up, don't touch it, we'll do the best we can. And then, um, you know, she picked something up and immediately, you know, and stuck herself. So she was saying, you know, you had all those, and this was the other thing that it made me think about, was that this, that kind of thing is mostly in. The walkable areas in the downtown. So like we have these biohazards that. Right, and we're sending out because she's like, you know, little kids, they're not good at that. They're touching their face and there's, there could be, you know. All, all different kinds of bio waste, which is true, which is true, because now like when you're cleaning the, the. You know, homeless encampments, a lot of times there's bottles of urine.
Right.
Right, so.
Those trash grabbers?
Right. So this is the thing I'm thinking about, is that we should really have a, an army of trash grabbers, so that, so that people, and. I think that we should tell, I think we should tell people to bring their own water, and I think we should tell people to, to, you know. Think about, uh, bringing like a leather glove or a thick glove. And they can certainly have like a.
An underlayer.
An underlayer with a plastic glove, but I think we should have them bring gar, some type of gardening glove or something that can protect their fingers and then. Just have more trash grabbers. And then I'm wondering whether, like.
We could advise them to bring gloves or gloves.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, right.
And water.
Right. So, yeah, so they can take care of their own. I mean, people are carrying water bottles around all the time, so I think they can bring their own water for the cleanup. But then we'll provide, you know, the coffee and the, whatever the drinks might be at lunch, but also just like. Whatever we can do to avoid, you know, so much hand contact with the stuff. And the other thing is I think that we should have a policy of having people report where there's a homeless encampment. That's been abandoned, as opposed to trying to clean that up themselves.
Right, because there would be some money in there, too.
Right, yeah, and there could, you know.
It just somebody comes back and like, what are you doing on my own?
Oh, I know, right? Yeah, you take their mustard or whatever.
After you left, after you left, there was this, um, woman and a man on the, on the side. Where the kitchen is at Co Park, and she had a, a shopping cart that was piled, you know, to like six feet.
I saw that.
You saw that, okay.
It's still there.
Oh, oh, really? She left it?
I don't know. I don't know why this city is not doing anything about it.
Cart there in the morning?
I think it was, so I don't know if it was.
No, that's her, that's her stuff. That's her stuff, so like, I mean, I don't know why, I was, I said to her something like this. Because I, I hadn't seen it there earlier. I came from the other side, I guess.
Yeah.
But she was there with the cart and I said, is that, is that what you got from the cleanup? I know, isn't that terrible?
Oh, calling yourself trash. I, I had, I had people come, I had a guy come who was definitely clearly homeless and he was, he just, he's like, hey. I clean trash all the time. Do you want my name for your, for your statistics? I was like, sure. I was like, you know what we are after. I want that number, but, and then, you know, let him have like go on.
Yeah, I always, I was like, I was thinking, you know, because somebody, a homeless person or two always comes, they always come.
Well, they're right, you know, they're standing over there.
So, you know, and I, there's always extra coffee and donuts.
Yeah.
That's what we should be done with the milk.
That's true.
Next time we'll think about it.
See, how long is that milk gonna last for, though, unrefrigerated, you know? Yeah, you could just.
The whole day.
Yeah, why not? Yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever, I, I, I understand.
Yeah.
Let's see, banner for the table, we've tabled that.
We have, okay.
We'll talk about that the next one, because we were thinking of getting a banner just for tabling in general, and I have some leads on that, but we can talk about that. At a different day, um. Earth Day, oh, Earth Day, um, efforts, like board, so having, like. We had taped other events against the, like hanging off the side of the table and people were just getting confused.
Right, like people thought it was, it was information for that event. We have to have clearly, like if we're, if we're promoting other things. It has to be separated and, you know, in some way, and probably upright and that it's a, you know.
Other events.
Yeah, other Earth Day, Earth Week events or whatever, because we had the, the Heart Springs thing that was today.
Park and Rec.
Park and Rec had stuff, um, the Winstead did a clean, well, that, yeah, they were doing it this week, this week. Um, so, you know, something we could do next, next year. Uh, point person for photos, um, keeping the rollaway dumpster. Um.
Until.
Until not Monday morning, but Tuesday, because we had Steve Ibanee drove, was still driving around. And the dumpster was gone, so I had to figure out where he was gonna put the extra trash.
And that's happened before. There was one year, I don't remember what year, was it your first year? I, do you remember what, um, a year when the trash didn't all get picked up? Again, but that was.
Maybe that was the first year.
Could have been your first year or could have been the year before.
I do remember that. I do remember that, because what's his name again? Was supposed to, it was, um, Tom was doing that, Tom Kay?
Uh huh.
I can't defer, but, uh.
Yeah.
That was when he was still on the commission. Uh, two, 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 I said new first aid kit.
I think we need a second truck.
Um, second truck, I have, no, I didn't have that on there. If we can find someone else.
Yeah.
Where's the truck?
Or another pair of, like, like a partner for whoever does have the truck. That's a huge job.
Yeah, it is.
I asked Steve if he wanted me to go around and help him, but he wanted to do the.
Yeah, he does. It takes a lot of time, because he basically, nothing's happening at first, so he's cleaning up his own spot. And then all of a sudden they start rolling in and you gotta drive all over and maybe you, it's not efficient, so like, you have to go back out to mountain road and like.
He has a small truck.
It's like a four foot bed.
Yeah.
So.
So, yeah.
He had to do multiple trips in some cases. Um, yeah, more traps, trash pickers. The NIPS tax money, we can use that by them, so hopefully Public Works can, we can find a design and ask them to buy it for us.
Yeah.
With that, that NIPS money. Um, yeah, and that's, that's pretty much it. I'd said, you know, maybe in the future doing other, like the river, they all, a lot of people cleaned up the Noggetuck at, um. The senior center, which is just a great place to clean up the Noggetuck because it's so open and like, people can get in easier, um.
What about dump sites, like, um, I thought if you go all gird at, and then go into the, where it no longer paved. People dump like refrigerators.
On the G property there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. There's like a turnaround and then you can put. Yeah.
In the Stillwater Pond area, we have that in the Lead Road area, like anywhere that, that.
Lovers Lane.
Yeah. These kind of outskirts areas, I think that it's mostly coming from, um, surrounding towns that don't have bulk waste. Pickups, so, you know. But, yeah, I don't, I mean, we've had people go out and, I mean, you know, individuals are familiar with that, that stuff, so. I guess that's something we should talk about, is if we know these locations, like can we get, we've done river cleanups in the past. We've had construction companies. We've had construction companies go out, like they. They loan their time and equipment and go out and pull things out of the river that people can't get to or they're too heavy. They also worked with, like we had construction companies working with um deep. To, it was sort of silly because they worked with deep to make, to put like these giant trees. Across these giant boulders so that there were shade areas on the Nagatuck for fish. And then after Katrina, Army Corps came in and made us scour it all, like clean, pull all that stuff out, so, you know. So that there wasn't anything that would be like a flooding hazard, but we we did have like these um partnerships between. Conservation Commission, Toronto Limited, and um construction companies, local construction companies, so. Wondering if that's something that we can create, uh. Maybe a program to, if we know these areas to clean, you know, to pick one and. And pull stuff out.
And some, I mean, some of the stuff, if you have a couple guys, you could, like the refrigerator, a couple guys could probably put onto the truck, so you say in the morning. The guy with the truck, he, you know, there's no bags to pick up. Picks up a refrigerator or whatever, mattress and.
It's hard and I I I totally get you because, because. Steve is like, you know, him, it's either him and George or him and someone else, Tom Kneffer or something like that, and they're just basically hauling stuff. Like big bags and stuff.
And this time, it was mostly, it was just.
But maybe we could like switch out, you know, get other people like have.
Yeah.
People who were doing the counter could go out, you know, and and for, to help with that kind of stuff, we can try to figure that out so we can like relieve people. They agree, there's some stuff like that.
As if there is like abandoned um encampments that always is like these debris covered. Sopping wet. Um mattresses, pieces of foam, um sleeping bags, they weigh a ton, they're really difficult to get out and you're covered in. You're covered in whatever it is, trying to get.
So that's, that's all I had, it was a lot, but um. If you think of anything else, just like if even it comes to your head, just since you were there last or or Dan, just like send me an email and I'll just add it to this. I'm gonna just basically make this list, scan it and put it in the folder, so all I do now in the following year is just pull everything back up again and try to recreate it. Um, but yeah.
So then the last thing, I think we'll table everything else, last thing is the Jigs Donahue um Food Forest Updates and Final Plans.
Yeah, so I um. We're, we're doing pretty good on this, this is like a timeline, you know, the the event is on May tenth. So we have, we have a date, um. We have a draft plan, that's this uh. This one right here, I don't know if we've looked at this as a group, we looked at it with Northwest Conservation District. But we replaced out the apples with pawpaw because of just the shadiness of that site. Um, so this is just like kind of like a, maybe a starting point, but we'd wanna get out there at some point with like maybe pin flags. And like, measure and mark out and see, and we can adjust it, it can be a little bit more organic looking than this, but. I was just thinking this orientation so that there wouldn't, if there was like an internal cluster, like if we moved this inside, it's just gonna be less surface area for picking. So I was just trying to think of what we can do to like get the most, I mean, we could open this up and have another row, um, in there too, that's another possibility. If we think that that makes sense to do.
I think that that might, for blueberries, it certainly does currents, I don't think it matters.
Was that, how far apart of those blueberries space?
So this is there, I did the diameter is five feet. So it's uh, or no, 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 it's five foot spacing, so. And for the shrubs, I did five foot spacing, for the trees, I did ten, so this to here is five.
I know, I think that would be fine, honestly, I bet there will be a.
A gap in between?
Yeah, because they tend, they, they're, yeah, I'm thinking that my, my. Giant high bush blueberries and they're not very wide, they're more like.
Because I thought, like when you first plant them, they're small, and you think, oh, I got plenty of room, but then as they grow and get bigger, it, they crowds and.
Yeah, but five, did you plant five?
No, I did less than five, I think I did three feet.
Yeah. Because that's about what they get, they get to be about three feet, they could be four feet maybe.
Yeah, so.
Five would probably be perfect.
But you could put more space.
We could put more space in between because this is all like, so the idea was to take this whole area, this fifty by twenty-five, which is pretty huge. And and um lasagna.
Mulch it.
Because they don't, because Park and Rec don't want, they 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 want straight lines for mowing, so they wanna go. They don't want any kind of wacky shapes. We wanted, and they want it to be, yeah, mulch to the edge, they can run their mower up onto the mulch. Um, when I told them we're not gonna be able to like weed it. Weekly, mu- monthly even, you know, like we'll get out there, maybe in the beginning of the year, in the end of the year, something like that, um. But I don't know that that's gonna be a problem, we'll just try to go really, really thick with.
With mulch.
Yeah, and yeah, so anyway, so this will be a starting point and then we could like, yeah, we could always like. Increase the spacing a little bit between them, this mountain man, I don't know, I just kind of shoved it in there, it's, you know.
You guys want any gooseberries? Because I could take cuttings of gooseberries, they propagate very easily.
Where would we put them? I mean, that would be ideal for the shade.
They do have prickers, but I don't know if that matters.
Maybe, maybe propagate them into pots for next year and we can boost. After, because I have the same, so I got one from my mom. And I tried to just cut it and like get it over winter and it just didn't work, it didn't, it didn't take. But I layered it, so I just put a big rock over a branch and let it root and then I cut it and potted it and then it did. And planted it that fall and it did, it's leaving out now.
The branches come out and they kind of hang like that.
Yeah.
You just like put it, push it down.
Right, I've seen that with like strawberries with like clothespins, people shove into the ground to to reroot those, but. Uh, anyway, I don't know, does that make sense? Just that way we don't have to try to shove it in, we can take time, but if we.
Yeah, no pressure, I just figured.
I think what we were talking about that, we, I, we brought it up and we were like, because it is a shady site and. There's not a lot of stuff that produces well in in shade. Um, are they dessert variety or is it a, is it the red ones or the, or the uh?
Eternal reddish.
Okay, I know the green ones don't get sweet, you have to make them in a jam, but the red.
I mean, they're slightly, they are slightly tart.
I don't think you can eat the the regular ones, the green ones.
Really?
Like you. Well.
I mean, they won't make you sick.
No, no, but you have to add, people add a lot of sugar.
I mean, I I pick it, if you pick them when they're still green, they're very tart, but if you wait until they're like half red, they turn like half red.
They get like a blush.
Right.
I mean, they're still, they're not sweet, but they're, I find them tasty.
That's my understanding of the dessert variety and of the other variety is like the British jam makers, right? Then you could probably pick them early and add a ton of sugar and they taste great, um. But, but yeah, so that's, so that's this, so we got that plan, check. Um, we met with Ed Advance in the Community Garden, Ed Advance is plowing forward, we're not doing any promotion, we're totally hands off, that's their. Their show, which is great, I'm really happy about that, um, and uh, uh, the Community Garden. Wants to be involved, but I have a feeling like they're not gonna.
Oh, okay.
I don't, I just haven't heard, she's been like, oh, we don't really know what we could do.
All right, so.
So we may wanna protect the Community Garden, like, I don't know. Right, because like I don't want people like trampling through there, I mean, maybe people will be fine and they'll recognize that it's an area that you probably shouldn't walk through, but um. I don't know.
So she's not gonna come?
I don't know, I'll send her another.
Doesn't she wanna tell us where it's close to go?
I don't know, I'll ask her if she's gonna come.
Okay.
To confirm, but I just like, I've been, it doesn't seem like she's really like, I don't know if she doesn't want to dedicate, it's another time to dedicate it to. Here's, I think she's just playing the weather, and so she's just not making any commitments until. So I think now with the, this week of warm, I would feel like maybe she's getting a little more confident.
Okay, and then the the um. So does that mean that Northwest Conservation District is doing the cow paths in the seeds, okay?
And like river education type stuff by the river, um. Public Works, I talked to Public Works via Water, they're providing us not mulch but wood chips. Anyone have a problem, I don't know. Well, bark mulch, right, like uh, you're doing a planting bed and then. We're good with just, with just.
I've always been using wood chips.
Right, um, so, and they, and that's just from Public Works, so they could probably just, they're just gonna drop it for us, like, oh, we'll give you a bowl loads, I just have to call him. We, they're also gonna drop off a porta potty, so a porta potty, they'll fill the water up, uh, they're gonna dr- drop a bunch of chips off.
For for moving the chips? I don't know how nice the chips are, I know when I chipped some branches and trees and stuff. Um, it was very hard to shovel, so okay, a pitchfork or some sort of.
Okay. Yeah, um, I don't have a pitchfork for.
I do.
Yeah.
Thought somebody's gonna have to remind me.
But I would need a wheelbarrow.
Yeah, I was gonna bring my uh Tupperware, I have like one of those like Tupperware ones that have uh. I say Tupperware, Tupperware brand, where they have the two wheels on the side and they're like super heavy duty plastic and they're, they're great, um. No, it's, it's Tupperware brand, they're, it's really nice, it's great for rocks. Um, because they go, you can do it like this and they don't balance, so you just like set it down like this on the, and you can just roll it on and then over the lip and then it just. You don't have to hurt your back, um. But anyway, yeah, so that's that, scope to the event, so we did kind of a.
Oh, and what about the cardboard, do we have to get the cardboard?
It's later on.
Oh, I'm sorry, 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 sorry.
But yes, we do, that's, that's probably something we have to do for sure, um, so I just did, this is just like really basic, but. The event was gonna be ten to two. Because the idea was there's gonna be a food truck there. And uh, we wanna like center it around lunch, because they're gonna get vouchers, the students, to to get free food. Seeing sliders, have you ever had them? I have not, uh, but. Anyway, yeah, so I just, I don't know, I just mocked this up, this is pretty basic, right, get, get there. Uh, what, rival, maybe, I don't know, see, I already messed this up, nine, if the event.
No.
It was an eleven?
Eleven.
It's at eleven.
It's at eleven, it's like between eleven and say two.
Eleven and two, okay, that makes more sense. Yes, it has, yep, May tenth, um, right, so get there an hour early, I don't know if that's, if you wanna get there earlier.
I don't care whether we're there earlier or not, I, but I think we should dig some test holes.
Right.
We gotta see what the ground.
Do have to do that, um.
But we're not, I thought, I thought I remember you guys saying that the ground is very hard and.
We have to be, so I've been trying to, I've been communicating with Northwest Conservation District, so I kind of like. Pushed that kind of assessment off to them and and that's been just like MIA with everything, um. I had asked her to follow up on the mulch and she just didn't even get back to me when I asked about it, so. I, this is a busy time, right, they, is there sale this weekend?
Is that, did I miss the sale?
No, I think it's next, next weekend, it's coming, this coming week.
Coming weekend, yeah, so she's probably just pulling her hair out.
Red mud and my beach plum and some other thing. That is door nailing a truck.
Um, okay, so.
Um, I. By eleven o'clock is probably the earliest I can get.
That's fine, I mean, whatever people can do, it's just if people can come earlier than just having them, because I think for us. Right, and we have Northwest Conservation District's gonna be kind of doing their thing with table and and they are kind of gonna be a unit. And then we're gonna be planting stuff with kids and doing mulch, so we'll probably just delegate like, you know, Jeremy, you wanna take kids and. Do some mulching, right, like that's pretty, kind of try to manage a group and we'll just split it up.
Where should we park?
Uh, that's actually a really good, so we're gonna be parking at the um.
Three fifty Main Street.
Torrenton Area Health.
Yep.
We park there and there's a little path that runs down. So I wanted to put up signs at Torrenton Area Health on the road.
That said, park here for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know how to do that, I mean, I had, we have some signs, like the plastic yard signs that I could try to like white tape over the whole thing.
Can we, how about, can, can David uh print us, like if we. Uh, we did a publisher thing, could he print us?
He printed paper and we can tape it to it as long as, we just put it up the day off, so it's not, so if it rains, you know, we get.
That's what I, I think that's probably the easiest thing to do is just. Um, yeah, have the, I mean, we could either do a publisher thing, uh, we need to know the dimensions and.
So I figured we have signs.
Print sit out on one big sheet.
Right.
Were we putting any compost, soil?
Amendments or anything like that?
They almost talked about it and it was kind of a net saying, yeah, I could get all that stuff, right?
That's where we had left it before, I know. Because we could just do it for the hole, it's not like we have to like, I think she was saying she was just gonna buy bags of compost, because there's so few. But they had some money and there's so few holes, right, they, if you dig like, you know, digging the hole's gonna be the issue, but if you get the hole in there, you can mix up a little bit, because they. Why, we wanna mix the native soil and even if it's kind of not that good, um. She did say that she was gonna look at that, but I will put it on there again, because, um. Yeah, if it's like paint, hard pan and we can't, you know.
And and without, you know, if it doesn't have good nutrients, that we won't really get much growth out of it.
Hopefully, like, uh, if we were able to wood chip it every year.
Yeah.
Eventually, right, um, but with wood chips over, over, um. Bark mulch, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna take a while, but it's gonna take a while for it to break down because it's so big, if it was like, like, like sawdust, right, on the berry.
Because I have a wood chip.
Yeah.
The weeds really haven't grown.
Yeah, well, if you put pile there, you're, if you're probably compatible too, right, and there's just always, I have a wood chip spot too, that's like, yeah, that's same sort of. Or I put my firewood there too, it's just the, the seasonal spot, um. All right, these are good points, I'll bring these up, um, and that, so anyways, that's that, that basic logistics, so really just three hours. An hour before and an hour after for cleanup and, um, and and all that, um. Secure water, we did that, secure mulch, okay, I just.
Mulch we have are the wood chips, but.
Right, it's the, it, we have the mulch, but we don't have the cardboard and the site prep with digging the holes and staging materials and all that, so those are the two. Last bits, and I mean, I can definitely work with the other partners to try to make sure we focus in on getting those, um. But we're pretty much, that's pretty much it at this point, and then, um.
Does anybody have a matic?
A what?
A matic.
Like a pick.
I'm trying to think if I have one or not, I mean, I know.
If the ground is compact, especially if there's rocks, a shovel will be horrible, a matic will be a million times easier.
Right, and we can get the.
Somebody's in my family's got a matic.
Do you have one?
I do, yeah, yeah.
So, I mean.
I could come help dig holes.
So I'm gonna have to, what I'm gonna try to do with everyone is schedule. Uh, site prep.
Right, yeah, but you want, you might want more than one matic, because um, I mean, you have, you have. Six blueberries, six currants, two pawpaw, that's a lot of holes to dig.
How big are the pots, they're, they're a gallon?
So the pawpaws. Are a little skinny thing.
Those like, yeah.
Like, you know, so it's deep, but skinny, but you want it to be at least double, triple the size.
Especially if we're gonna add.
But still, that's not that big, you know, even that, it's not that big, the, the currants are in pots like this, like the pots are, actually, everything's pretty small. Blueberries are the biggest, I mean, the apples were, one's the biggest.
Right.
You know, like here, but.
But yeah, we, I mean, we'll want bigger holes anyway, just to, you know, at least to to. To aerate it, right, if it's compacted, even if it's the same native soil, we can like, it'll fluff it up a little bit and it won't be like, you know, no oxygen. Um, but so I guess the point, the big thing that is the um. The cardboard, does anyone have a good cardboard contact?
I don't personally have the card- cardboard contact, but I know that like the places to go would be. If one lump places a cell windows and doors, if one lumber.
Torrenton sat door.
Torrenton sash and door.
Because they may just have giant.
Giant things, yeah.
You know, my, most might have big pieces is uh, my present. Because all the bicycles come in these.
I bet they're not tapped for that.
Um, yeah, they, yeah, they're like, they're high.
Yeah.
Where the frames come in.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, my presentation. I talked to Dave.
Who's the contact?
Big Dave.
Dave.
Big Dave, you know him?
I may have sent him a sign violation. I'm not, I'm not the best person to be messaging a lot of this stuff sometimes.
Okay, keep calling and ask for cardboard? All right.
Or Lowe's never got a gift certificate to us for the Earth Day cleanup.
Right.
Wonder if we could ask them and get a matic?
Yeah, for a tool, just to like for, to keep on hand.
Yeah, um, I mean, the Earth Day event is passed, but I never ended up talking to a manager.
Or we can get grabbers there too, but but yeah, we probably want the matic because grabbers, if we know we can get it with the trash cleanup money, we should just. Let that take care of it.
We should go get bags with that money too, right?
Yeah, I think we can get pretty much, as long as we can tie it. They didn't wanna give it to us for the Bannon Street event, I was trying to be like, we're cleaning up trash, they, which was like a really small, nothing part of that event, and they're like. Ah, I don't know if this really meets the, what we want here, but if it's, it's bags for cleaning up trash, I mean, that's pretty much.
Right, okay.
Gotta be there.
So that's good, the NIPS money will be good for us.
The mic, uh, um, Dan, if you wanted to just let me know, like what, um, what big day?
What are you gonna use for?
Lay it down.
Oh, okay.
And then just
Yeah, basically, we're gonna smother the grass with it. So instead of having to remove all the grass, we'll smother the grass, well then we'll put all the wood chips on top.
So we'll put the holes in first, get the plants installed and then layer and spread.
Okay, no problem. Not to add anymore. So, I was just gonna say, um, if you lay a tarp on the grass in that area for a couple days, the grass ahead of time.
I was thinking we could Have a time and then it would be soft. So, like, that's one of the things that that does, is like, it's, because I did that in my, my whole front yard. Where like, it, it, but you don't think it would happen there?
I don't think we have enough time.
Oh, no, no, we don't have enough time, but I don't, you know, I don't think, we kind of nixed that, right?
Right.
Sort of added a whole other event.
I think it's okay, I think it'd be okay to dig, get the holes in, put the stuff down. We just need a thick layer. I think that's part of it, because the grass will fry.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, it can't be that good there anyway.
What, the grass?
Yeah. How good could it be? I don't know.
You'll find out.
My grass is terrible at my house, so
My grass readily died when I, when I was on the mulch.
Um, all right, well, that's, that's pretty much all I have for this. Let's just keep contacts, but we have our official approval for Parks and Rec for the event. So I got it in hand. We have the minutes giving us approval to be there, so they know it's happening. There's no outside communication to change any of the dynamics here. We're, okay, this is good. I think this is all worked out for the best.
All right, so everything else is tabled, all we need to do is adjourn. All in favor?
All right.
Uh, emotion carries. If somebody abstains, can emotion be